Good morning, it's nine thirty and time to convene our Board of Commissioners meeting for July eighteenth. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Now please rise for the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning Commissioners, Dave Weisner, Fort Indian Town Gap. Getting back into the swing of things at the Gap after the Fourth of July holiday. Things are extremely hot, as you know. We've been working hard to keep our troops in the field safe, getting through training in the heat, if any of y'all have ever been in the military and been in the field this time of the year. It is an extreme challenge to do that. You're wearing a lot of gear, a lot of weight, out and elements. Heat is a thing we take very serious. We always had the analogy, drink plenty of water, that's probably the best way to get through this. So we have that. Total amount of troops that have trained on the Gap, we're up over a hundred and twenty thousand troops on the Gap already. Still getting ready to have another big divisional level warfighter exercise coming up at the end of the summer for the end of our FY. So we'll have, I'm sure, have another banner here again. Sally, as you know, last night they were wearing it out with Bradley Lauffire out there.
But it wasn't very long ago.
Here again at my house with the inversion, with the clouds, but we appreciate all of our neighbors patronage, as always, with the noise and the racket we make. Try to be progress in other community. Had a very successful butterfly tour season this year, had over five hundred people come to see our regal fritillary butterflies. So we appreciate everybody coming out and supporting us on that. We were able to open the Fort Indian Town Gap pool. We are still challenged with needing more lifeguards, I'll put that out there. If anybody wants to be a lifeguard, if anybody has a young millennial teenager at home that needs a job for the summer, that they're good swimmers, please send them up to our pool. They'll be glad to talk to them about becoming a lifeguard. We'll work with them on getting them certified. Any, only of your questions, that's all we have today.
I do have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Veterans who are no longer in the service.
Right.
Are they, do they pay a fee to go to the pool?
Yes ma'am.
And is it a large fee?
Not a large fee for just the general public, it is ten dollars a day per person.
So veterans don't get any discount?
They, they don't.
Okay. Because people are looking for ways for veterans to stay cool in this hot, humid weather that we have. And I know the area agency on aging was offering some fans, I don't know if they're out by now or not, but I didn't know if maybe the Gap did something like that for veterans, at least in the hot, humid times.
Well, we run our morale welfare recreation as well, it's through what's called non-protracted funds. In other words, it has to sustain itself from the monies we take in. We have a board, as you know, on the state agency side of the Pennsylvania National Guard, where the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. That is a very good point that I, probably will take that up to the, to the board about maybe having a reduced rate. The Department defends those like myself that are active, retired, reserve. We pay six dollars a day. So the reason we do that is over and above the cost of the chemicals in the pool, which the county and city of Lebanon has certainly run pools, understanding the costs associated with it. The big cost that we have to cover is for the lifeguards and that's why we charge the way we do. And then obviously, for members of the general public, we're required by federal regulation to at least recoup our incremental costs. That's what it does, but that's something certainly I pick up with them. Not promising, but you know, that's something.
I think they, for tying that to the heat and humidity, I think they encourage people to stay indoors.
They, they do, I mean getting out.
Instead of, incentivizing them.
Oh yes sir. Certainly, I've spent many days in the pool when it gets hot.
Yeah, a lot of people do.
Growing up down south, it pulls you off a little bit, but yes.
And I've had comments where people can't afford the fees, so I say, well go to the swamp, that's free.
It is, yes.
Anything else? If not, thank you David.
Thanks sirs, thank you ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I see Chris Boyle joined us and I think he is a member of the press.
Yes.
And since the Lebanon Daily News took the third seat, you're welcome to sit in the first seat if you can't hear.
I can hear you fine, I'm very comfortable here, if that's okay with you.
No, that's fine, I just know a lot of people have trouble hearing back there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just keep your voices up. Just kidding.
We have the report of our treasurer, Mrs. Newman. Sorry, I have to check mark here already. Seek a motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved in second, any additions or deletions or corrections? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Now.
Okay, we had receipts on July sixteenth and seventeenth at one hundred thirty-nine-thousand ninety dollars and seventy cents. For us, the total cash at one billion four hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and nine cents. Our expenditures this week were one billion one hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred eighty dollars and forty cents. Then distributed tax claim is forty-two thousand two hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents. So that leaves us with two hundred and twenty-six thousand twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as read.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any comment or question? Hearing none all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Thank you Sally. Introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
Shalee Dus, Director of Human Resources. Stephanie M. Bunzis, Director of Human Resources. Chief of Personal Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Matthew Mellon, Assistant District Attorney, Law and Reservation, effective July twenty-sixth. Alexander Moore, June alcohol Division Officer, One Reservation, effective July nineteenth. Sharon Miller, Health Services Supervisor, Retirement, effective December one first.
Seventh.
Second.
Give a motion in a second to accept those resignations and retirements, any comment or question? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Under changes of status, transfers and promotions, Joseph Organtini, transfer from Corporate, two, in area agency on aging, to Corporate, three, Children's New, at the rate of nine hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, by weekly, effective July twenty-ninth. Tanya Ziegler, promotion from Secretary B in the District Attorney's Office to Administrative Specialist in the District Attorney's Office, at the rate of one thousand four hundred three dollars and twenty-six cents, by weekly, effective August twelfth. Karen Hudson, change of status from casual call developmental assistant at Renova to part-time developmental assistant at Renova, no change in her rate, effective July twenty-ninth.
Make a motion to accept the changes of status as read.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any question or comment? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Under other transactions, President Judge Tilwok would like to hire Kimberly Miller as a court reporter, at the rate of one thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, by weekly, effective July twenty-second. MHIDEI would like to hire Sambita Merchant as a fiscal assistant, at the rate of nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-four cents, by weekly, effective July twenty-ninth. And MHIDEI would like to hire Eunice Eduke as an accountant, too, at the rate of one thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-one cents, by weekly, effective July twenty-ninth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve those transactions, any question or comment?
No.
None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. Cody Ludwig, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, effective August first.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve those salary board requests, any comment or question? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Under conference seminar request, under mandated, Danielle Gray, Kim Shaw, Brandon Cole, Kaila Conyers, Brianna Rainier, and Ron DeSho, from MHIDEI, would like to attend the Seventeenth Annual Global Diversity Workshop in Lebanon on August seventh. There's a three hundred and thirty dollar registration fee, mileage reimbursement, and mandated for early interment of staff. Randy Stewart, Jeremy Brennan, and Dave Mallory, for probation, would like to attend by emptying site in Camp Hill on August fourteenth. No registration fee, six credits mandated by PDAP. Eunice Eduke, from Drug and Alcohol, would like to attend DDAP Technical Assistance in Harrisburg on August first, thirty-five dollar registration fee, mileage reimbursement, mandated by DDAP. Anna Devine and Teresa Hodor Grant, from area agency on aging, would like to attend Protective Service by your impression of running on August twenty-seventh. No registration fee, mileage and meal reimbursement, mandated by PDA. Courtney Bender and Jessica Luth, from District Attorney, would like to attend Bridges Out of Poverty, Topical Training in Harrisburg on September twenty-third. This dollar registration fee, mileage and meal reimbursement, three credits mandated by PCCD. Bailey Van Fleet, from Children's New, would like to attend investigative interviewing a child sexual abuse case in Mechanicsburg on September twenty-seventh and twenty-sixth. No registration fee, mileage and meal reimbursement, top, credits mandated by DHS. Bailey Van Fleet would also like to attend Overview of Child Sexual Abuse in Mechanicsburg on August twenty-second and twenty-third. No registration fee, mileage, meal reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. The Anavascas, from Public Defender, would like to attend Trial Skills Training at Carlisle on August seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth. No registration fee, mileage reimbursement, twenty-fourth credits, mandated by P Supreme Court.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved in second, that we approve those mandated requests, any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Under mandated, Lynette Smith, under non-mandated, Lynette Smith from the Sheriff's Office, would like to attend Microsoft Exile Basics and Beyond, the Basics in Harrisburg on August twelfth and thirteen. One hundred twenty-eight dollar registration fee.
So moved.
Second.
Give a motion in a second to approve the sheriff's request. Any comment or question? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Raymond Heaton, from the Sheriff's Office, would like to attend Home Performance Firearms Instructor Course in Blossburg on July twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. Four hundred fifty dollar registration fee, mileage and meal reimbursement.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve the sheriff's request. Any comment or question? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Cam Bryce, from MHIDEI, would like to attend the Seventeenth Annual Global Diversity Workshop in Lebanon on August seventh, eighty-five dollar registration fee, and mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Give a motion in a second to accept the MHIDEI request, any comment or question?
I do have a question. Why would the next group be going as well and not receive the six credits?
Hers is required training and the other ones are requested.
Thank you.
Anything else? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Nicole Snyder, Judy Potter, Ashley Weber, Renee Dean, Spohr, Emily Rayel, Amy Reiner, Holly Adams, Karen Hunger, Rebecca Bernard, and Jeanne Masser, from MHIDEI, would like to attend the Seventeenth Annual Global Diversity Workshop in Lebanon on August seventh. Five hundred fifty dollar registration fee, and mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Give a motion in a second to accept that MHIDEI request, any comment or question? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered.
Nicole Snyder, from MHIDEI, would like to attend the Summit, Annual Community Mountain House Summit, Building the Bridge in Lebanon on September sixteenth. No registration fee, and mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve that MHIDEI request, any comment or question? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so ordered. Thank you.
Good morning stranger.
Good morning. Here to hold Matt Dan. Good morning. Good to see you. John Wengert with London Valley Rails and Trails.
Tom Chris, London Valley Rails and Trails Board Member. We have two components to this, Tom is going to talk a little bit about the resolution we need for Phase Six. But part of that, I want to make a statement about Phase Seven, which you're all familiar
That's the one that starts at Twenty-Fifth Street and goes to Long Lane. Just in case somebody isn't familiar with the number.
So, after much anticipation, I'm pleased to report that virtually all work is complete on the Phase Seven expansion of the LRT. As you're all well aware, developing this section of the trail from Twenty-Fifth Street in West Lebanon to Long Lane in North Lebanon Township was by far the most challenging to date, for a variety of reasons we're all familiar with. But thanks to the patience and persistence shown by this Board of Commissioners, as well as County Planning Department, and our partners at PennDOT and DCNR, we have added another link in what will eventually become across county trail systems. Trail system that now also connects to another county treasurer, Union Canal Tunnel Park. Having scouted this path when it was barely passable, a mix of mud and weeds, Jamie was out there with us, I'm simply amazed by the transformation we observed during the final walkthrough last week. There's relatively small, a relatively small list of punch list items from that inspection, but the contractor JD Ekman and the engineer Wilson consulting group should be commended for an outstanding job. So, at this point, I'm recommending we open the trail to the public, if you concur. This would be a soft opening right now, but we are planning an official ribbon cutting ceremony on September nineteenth. We'd like you to mark your calendars for that. It's a state, having representatives from PennDOT as well as DCNR at that ribbon cutting ceremony.
Do you have a time for that, Tom?
Not specifically yet. It'll be late morning.
So just reserve the date for now.
Late morning, eleven through eleven. Tom and County Planning folks are actually trying to coordinate that as more of a, we'll have a ribbon cutting, but also a tour of what's been completed at Phase Seven and Phase Nine B, the bridge over the Swatara Creek.
And will we be carpooling there, or will we be?
Lebanon Transit bus.
Lebanon Transit bus.
We've already agreed to that.
Great.
And we're also going to go out to the Inwood Iron Bridges site, PennDOT wants to also showcase that project to the media and DCNR and others, just because there is a link there as well to the trail system that goes beyond LRC. So there were a couple of safety items on that punch list, you may have seen Jamie sent out some photos that we feel pretty confident have been addressed. We didn't really want to open the trail immediately last week because of those, because those have been, we think, adequately addressed in the short run, with some orange safety fencing at the bridge near Liley Farm. That'll have a permanent fix with a more gated structure on the other side of that bridge. But there's a lead time on that structure, on that particular part that they need to complete that, I think it's about six weeks, delivery until those will be there. So they strung orange safety fence on those corners where it's open, so it's actually an opening.
When they go back to do that, then will the trail be closed for a day or two till it's installed?
I don't think they'll have to close the trail.
Okay, we can work on it.
We can work around it, yeah. Because during the week, you know, during the peak, working hours for Ekman is not really that heavily used. They see a few people here and there, but I would imagine they'd be able to work around that pretty easily.
Thank you.
But I just want to reiterate our thanks to this board for what I said, patience and persistence, because it was a challenge, by far the biggest challenge we had. And there were some times where, you know, frustration level was pretty high and everybody just maintained, you know.
Be core.
Long, just objective and just working through everything, whether it was instruction-related or, you know, adjacent property owner-related, we had all kinds of challenges on this one. Probably write a book about.
But you guys were fabulous, too.
John, you left yourselves out, you know, the team that you have, all the volunteers, and, you know, yeah, your diligence, at least it's been rewarded, that's the good news, you know, here we are today. But that was, you know, steep climb for a lot of volunteers that some wouldn't have had the stamina for it.
Yeah.
But thank you.
So, in fact, I'll hand it over to Tom, because we want to talk a little bit about what's next, you know, this is, you always have something in the, in the hopper, so to speak, and that would be closing this gap now between Chestnut Street where the trail stops and Twenty-Fifth Street, where this Phase Seven begins, that's what we call Phase Six. And then, I think we won't talk about it immediately today, I guess.
Can we just start, Tom? I just mentioned one thing related to Phase Seven. John, just to force it out, that we did meet with the new owner of the farm and have reviewed all the crossings and everything like that. I think there's a new work, new sort of relationships there with the new owner.
Absolutely. The new owner is actually a trail user, a heavy trail user. Most weekends he likes to ride the trail with his family, so, you know, we had a great first meeting, and I think he'll be a supportive asset to, you know, we'll have a mutually conducive relationship out there now.
That is wonderful to hear.
Coast Commissioners, at your place, you can look at this at your leisure, it's our status report that talks about all the things that are taking place right now, or will take place with regard to the rail trail, I won't spend any time on that. We're here today to talk about Phase Six, as John said. That project has been broken down into four sections, Six A, Six B, Six C, and Six D. Our grant application to you, that we need your approval for a resolution, is for Phase Six D. And that's the entire section through the Lebanon Valley Mall, taking us back and connecting us with the underpass at Twenty-Fifth Street under the North Fork Southern Railroad. This is an amazing project. John and I were noting out while we were waiting for this presentation, that years and years ago, John and our rail trail engineers said, wouldn't it be great if this facility connected with the mall? You know, then we were looking at bypassing the mall and using North Fork Southern property near the PennDOT County Maintenance Building, and that fell through. But now we have this amazing relationship ongoing with the Lebanon Valley Mall. And actually, when we build this section of Phase Six, it's going to be on mall property. Pedestrians, when the mall is open, are going to be encouraged to go through the mall. They are actually improving the interior corridors of the mall for rail trail pedestrian users. They obviously believe it's going to bring more traffic, more business to their stores. So they gave us a letter of consent, they're providing all the right of way through the long-term linear easement for a dollar.
Wow, that's phenomenal.
Amazing relationship.
Thank you, boss.
We've got some really exciting things going on with Phase Six D. But if you look at your map, Phase Six A of this overall project goes through the John E. Wengert Memorial Park. That's in and around the Lebanon Catholic School Complex. From there, Phase Six B runs along Chestnut Street, all the way out to Twenty-Second Street, it'll connect to Gloninger Woods Park in North Cornwall Township. Phase Six C would include a relocated Twenty-Second Street, a turn back of that road to, from PennDOT, North Cornwall Township, a new bridge over the Quitte Mahill Creek, going up to the intersection at four twenty-two. That's Phase Six C. And we're working on a whole bunch of aspects of that right now, this is a very complex project. We even have Representative Ryan looking to establish in state legislation additional funding for PennDOT to turn back that road to redo the bridge. So we've got some amazing things happening there on Phase Six C. But again, our grant application today that we need your approval on is for Phase Six D. And that grant application is a million five thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. One million five thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. This is our first time going after a multimodal transportation fund grant from DCEB. These NTF funds are state dollars. We're asking DCEB to waive the match on this, because of all the other money, we're going to have it all the other sections of Phase Six. And when I talked to the staff about that, they were supportive of that concept. So this would be a hundred percent funded section of the rail trail that could either be built as a standalone section, or if we cobble together all the funding, we still need about two million dollars to finish all of Phase Six, because of that new bridge, a realigned roadway. This is a real complex project. But if we cobble all that together, we want to have one contractor, one bid letting, and do the entire project in one big shooting match. And that could possibly happen in twenty twenty-one, that's what we're seeing for twenty twenty-one. So again, the last time I was here, we talked about urgency, and we're still feeling the urgency to get all this done and the plan for Phase Eight, you know, in and around, you know, the areas in North Lebanon Township and beyond. But today, the grant resolution we need you to approve, we need three copies signed and sealed, is for Phase Six D. With that, I'll stop.
Seek a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I have a question.
I'll second the motion. Motion on the table for a grant application for Six D of the rail trail. Is there any question or comment regarding that?
Yes, please. With the relocation of the road, does that thrust the motorcycle club concerns?
We have a whole series of concerns from the motorcycle club, and two of their major ones, access into their facility and egress out of it, will be addressed by this. We only need a sliver take of their property, only like six or eight inches, it's not a great deal, but we want to work with that, and so does North Cornwall Township, because that home that burned from that tragic car accident, that now is going to allow North Cornwall Township to improve that road that goes behind the CBS Pharmacy, and that would be a really awesome way for motorcyclists to get in from their rides to their facility, and then coming out, the egress for them, that steep up climb to get back to Chestnut Street, they've had some accidents there.
Yeah.
We would eliminate that with the relocated roadway.
With the old roadway going away?
Yes, that small portion of it would go away.
Okay, and then my other question is, living in West Lebanon Township, I know that my supervisors always have concerns about being consulted. By going through the mall, does this take a consultation with West Lebanon Township, or is it all on mall property and?
It's all, Commissioner Litts, all of the Lebanon Valley Mall property, but it may require a revised permit from West Lebanon Township, because we're taking away a few parking spaces. And when that plan was approved for the mall, it was approved based upon X number of spaces. Now it's going to be X number minus, probably fifteen or twenty spaces. We may have to go back to them for a letter of support to do that and modify the approved plan. It was approved way back in the sixties, probably, when the mall came to be. But yeah, we have that well under control. We've consulted them already about the project, they were notified about this grant application, so we're keeping them in tune throughout this whole process.
Wonderful. Those were my questions and concerns, because it is real close to where I live, I use those areas every day.
Anything else? Questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Not in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most. So moved.
Okay.
And Tom, thanks for shepherding all this stuff through the state. We know it's your relationship with them that means so much to some of these exceptions and success that we have yet. So, we're aware of that thing.
Do I leave this with Kathy to have a motion on its side, or how do we do it?
He just blows right by that, yeah.
There we are. Really lucky to have Tom's ass.
Absolutely.
Did you want to show your big map or anything before you read?
Oh.
Is there anything on there you need to reference?
A reference, not necessary, but maybe just 25th Phase 7, let's have it. 25th Street Trailhead, beginning of it, right there, Long Lane. That's what just opened, or, yeah, we're open now. One anecdotal thing from last evening. I was out to dinner and there were some folks talking at the next table from Lancaster County. Never saw them before, visitors, you know, to Mount Bretton. And they were talking about, I heard him mention something about riding bicycles. And then the one woman said, "Well, you know, call Michelle and have her meet us at the barrel. She can come up from, let it's meet us at the barrel." And I thought to myself, who would have thought, you know, 20 years ago, you'd know where to go if you just said barrel.
Yes.
Institution.
Root beer there.
Root beer, yeah.
Very good job.
Appreciate it.
This is such exciting news. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, do you actually copy the status report that I presented?
Yes.
If not, they can make coffee tomorrow.
I understand.
Okay. So, next question?
I think I'm allocated. What do you do?
I need one of those. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
John, good morning.
Good morning.
Like to be seated and then introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
I am the administrator for the John J. P. Perry. I'm here today to present fiscal year 2019, 2020 service contracts as well as a contract for the Atlantic View Services. And in addition to what was on the memo, I also wanted to present this CUS data sharing agreement. So, first, service contracts for fiscal year 2019, 2020. We have 33 contracts for your approval. Of those contracts, 21 providers have not requested any increases. The increases that were requested are within our budget amounts. The larger increases are either covered through CCIS, which is the Childcare Information System, as well as medical assistance at your cost of change. I need for your approval of those contracts.
I'll make a motion to approve the new provider contracts as provided to us.
And I'll second that question.
It's been moved consecutive. Any comment or question? If they're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Most same signs, so moved.
Next up, I have the provider contract for the Atlantic View Services. And this is actually an addendum to our previous contract. We're so close to the new fiscal year, we just added it on this new contract. So, for them, they have on their contract a one-to-one staffing, so one staff to one client. And that is $560 a day. And a two-to-one staffing, so two staff to one client, and that is $852 a day.
What was that comment?
$852 a day. And I just want to put this out there that this contract is specifically for one child, one very high-needed child at this point in time. And we are constantly monitoring the staffing there to determine if she can be reduced to the lower level. She currently is on a one-to-one staffing. And if she does well on that, it may reduce her to the traditional open residential, which is reduced that to $270 a day. So, we're hopeful that this can occur. I ask that you approve the contract for me.
And this is the one that has been going on the last couple of years?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll so move.
I'll so move. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Thank you for your ability to stay with us and do the best of a very difficult situation. Since you're new to the position, keep smiling, we appreciate that. It's a very tough job you have, and this is an exception to that, but even more so.
The last thing I have for me.
We have to, if you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, most same signs, so moved. Now, you go ahead.
I think he's hard.
Yes, try to.
Next I have is the CUS data sharing agreement. This is to be in effect from October 2019 to September 2020. This agreement is the same that has been in years past. CUS is our statewide system that houses all of our child abuse cases. So, we can share information from county to county if you honor their cases. I ask that you approve the CUS data sharing agreement.
I'll make a motion.
There is a cost to this.
Make a motion that we approve the data sharing agreement as provided.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved.
Thank you. Hope to do more.
Thank you.
Good morning. Just need you to introduce yourselves and then proceed.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Scherk from Penn State Extension, County Relations Manager for Lebanon County. And today I brought with me Casey Clouser. He is our Master Gardener Coordinator, Master Watershed Steward Coordinator. And this is a new development for us in the Extension Office. So, I wanted to come and chat with you a little bit about that and then also give an update on the fair. So, Casey, do you mind introducing yourself?
Yes.
You have a question?
Yeah, so, hi, my name's Casey Clouser. I grew up in Shakers Town and then I've lived in Pittsburgh the last 10 years. So, recently moved back to be a part of the Penn State Extension team. So, I'm excited to...
Smart move.
Welcome home.
Thank you, thanks. So, in Pittsburgh, I did work on urban farming and storm water management for a nonprofit that did work in the city. And so, I'm happy to take that knowledge I learned there to bring back to Lebanon County in a rural suburban setting and here even in the city urban. So, it's great to have all those kinds of settings all in one small place to work with the community. So, I'm excited to, I've been working for about a month now. So, I'm excited to be able to work with the Master Gardeners in Lebanon County and get a real grasp on what they're doing, help them. But then also starting this new program with the Master Watershed Steward. So, being able to work with community members and citizens of Lebanon County, Lancaster and Dolphin as well on how to, you know, utilize the watersheds here that, you know, are leading into Chesapeake and having so many issues there. How we can restore watershed quality and be able to utilize the community members as the people to kind of make that change. So, I'm excited to be a part of it and be back in Lebanon County for sure.
I'd like to make sure that you are invited to join in two studies that are going on right now.
Okay.
You might be a bit aware of them and maybe not. One is the United States Department of Agriculture is conducting a study. And they just had their initial meeting this past week. So, they're in your building. You might want to walk down the hall and talk to them. And the other one is a combination of DCNR and the Audubon Society and others getting together. And they're going to be doing a flyover. And they're going to come at it from an economic perspective and how improving the watershed for clean water also benefits us financially. So, they're both pretty exciting studies. And I want to make sure you know that you're invited. The Sutar Watershed Association is coordinating that one for the county. And they're going to be meeting the first one this day of each month. So, whoever isn't interested can give us a call and get the information.
Great, thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Our statewide coordinator for the Master Watershed Steward has been out on maternity leave. So, we're letting Casey just get on board with the Master Gardener program. But I think she's coming back this week or next. So, we'll hope to connect and make sure that Casey's getting that late for those things.
This is a wonderful addition to your team.
Yes.
What about the fair? Let's hear about the fair.
That's where we're getting to. So, as you know, the fair starts Saturday and everything's been gearing up. We had set up on Tuesday night where we had many of the 4H kids come on. We'll come and help set up along with our county agriculture classes and teachers that were there as well. So, we have 31 entrants in the county for show on Saturday. And then there'll be adult leaders that will be proactive to deal with extreme temperatures. I want to be sure that we noted that, to keep both kids and the animals safe. I think we've been talking about this across our organization all week, gearing up for these activities. We want to make sure that we're providing cooling tents and shade and misting the horses and the riders as well. So, we have 346 indoor exhibits from members in 14 different 4H clubs. These will come in Friday evening and Saturday morning. And then our overall fair entries this year are 83 farm crop entries, 590 vegetable entries, 353 home baking and canning entries, 937 floral entries, 186 in needlecraft, 702 art photography and handicraft entries, 53 apiary and beekeeping entries. 4H, along with the Master Gardeners, will both have information booths and displays to be able to provide information on these wonderful programs that do come through Penn State Extension, but by the support of you or county commissioners and the county allocation. So, we hope to see many people at the fair and they'll stop in to learn more. One other thing I wanted to note, our county livestock judging team did quite well at the state contest last month. And they will be going to Nationals in November to represent since they won the state contest. So, this, the members of that team are Elizabeth Voight, Madison Weaver, Dakota Burnby, and Jared Baumgartner.
Those are some familiar names in the county.
Very familiar names, so.
Isn't this the second year that they've won that?
I believe two out of the last three years. Yeah, they don't, I don't think they won that last year. There was another, I think it was Lancaster County that won last year. But it was Lebanon the previous year. So, they keep teaming back and forth on that. And I know they work together as a team leading up to it to train and share information and practice and such, so. All these wonderful programs for 4H could not happen without the support from the county. So, we really appreciate all that you do for us.
It's a great partnership, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Our chief assessor, Dan Seaman, volunteers with that team.
Yes, yes, he does. Yes, he does. Had to think of that last name, but he's a big farmer. Yes. As you note, this line, there is a little bit of a concern in some different practices this year due to the threat of African swine fever. So, the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture has put in some new practices for our fairs and such this year. All the pigs that come to the fair must go to market within a certain weight. And that's just to help stop that spread. African swine fever cannot be transmitted to people, but we wouldn't want to have it transferred to other pigs. She's a winner there. So, there has been some change from that, rather than kids being able to take their projects back home.
On a different topic, unless you want this one?
It was related to the extension.
Is there a map they've spotted lanternfly in Lebanon County? Are we, you know, seeing any activity or not?
Unfortunately, we are. And unfortunately, we're seeing a little bit of an increase. Do you want to speak to that a little bit, or I can?
You can. I mean, we've seen a little bit, but I don't, not comparing to last year. So, I'm not, I don't know it was compared to last year, but I know there's.
So, here in the last week to 10 days, we've started to see it changing into that fourth end sour nip stage.
Black of the white dot.
Black of the white dot. So, now we're starting to see the red. So, the fourth end start is when you start to see the red. And why we believe that we're seeing or hearing more increase is because folks are now recognizing it as a spotted lanternfly because of the red color. So, our bones have been more active, I would say, in the last week to 10 days. And this is where we still want to advocate for getting rid of the spotted lanternfly. And if you must use chemicals, please look at the practices and the best guidelines for homeowners and commercial so that we're using the least amount of chemical that, you know, obviously taking care of it.
Is it an isolated area or?
No, I mean, it's because it's expanded to 15 counties here, we are seeing the spread of this.
But in Lebanon County, where is it?
In Lebanon County, it would be in the northeastern part of the county is where we're here.
Bethel.
Bethel, Cornwall a little bit, so right over from the Berks and Lancaster line. Lancaster has seen a huge increase here in the last, I would say, month. Afrida area is just going bonkers with spotted lanternfly. So, as we know, 322 is quite the corridor between there and, you know, Lebanon County. So, we anticipate more seeing this. There are materials on our website and in our office. If people have questions and want to learn how to best manage this, we can help them out. So, we encourage the public to call.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And at the fair, the Master Gardeners will have a table on spotted lanternfly information leaving out to the public. So, of all those pamphlets and information there at the fair.
At the smaller stage, they can be quick. So, it can be tough to track them. But even, you know, spraying water from a hose, that will slow them down. And then it's easier to, you know, say swat them if you see just a small section of them in your yard, if you will. So, there are a lot of different ways that you can go about this. It's going to take an integrated pest management approach to be able to curtail it.
Let's hope for the weather to be maybe not as hot as they're calling for. But the rain last year was the killer.
It was horrendous.
Six out of seven days, I think we had heavy.
Yeah, so high hopes for better weather and we can enjoy and celebrate all of Lebanon County agriculture this week.
I had a meeting up there this morning and it's really alive. A lot of volunteers out there already. But it's all set up, it's ready to go, so it looks great.
So, we hope to see you there.
Forty thousand people out there, yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Casey, good luck.
Thank you.
First, I've got LT Trans Lebanon Transit Board Member reappointments. And we've got Franklin Shearer, Lowell Brogan, and Ed Onspock, whose terms have expired. And at this point, she has heard from Franklin and Lowell that they would like to be reappointed to the board. Has not yet directly heard from Ed, but has indications that he would be reappointed. So, I think she did hear from him. Okay, maybe she shared that with me. Good. So, I think it's safe to, all right? And I'll make that motion if I should, uh, appoint to Shearer, Brogan, and, uh, and Onspock.
Motion on the floor to accept those reinstatements or re-ups from the term. Lebanon Transit, any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, most same signs, so moved.
Seeking your approval on a contract between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Budget and Lebanon County. And this is for the Integrated Population Health and Wellness Center at Good Samaritan Hospital, Wellspan. This is being built over at the former Williams Center by the Kaplan Pavilion. This is a RACP grant, Re-Health Assistance Capital Program grant from the state for $1 million. County is the pass-through for this and, uh, and the, basically, the project coordinator, we're working closely with the state and with the hospital. So, this is, I believe, the last document they need from us and then can begin to draw the funds now. Total, total project cost is $2,250,000. And again, this is $1 million toward that.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the RACP grant.
It's an agreement, actually.
Agreement for the RACP grant, excuse me. And that can assist the Good Samaritan Hospital with $1 million.
I'll second the motion to accept the favorable grant.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions and comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, most same signs. All same signs, so moved. Okay.
Next, I've got the letter from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services allocating the 2019-2020 Medical Assistance Transportation Program allocation to Lebanon County in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and four dollars. As you know, this is administered through our Community Action Partnership Program. And would need your approval and then signature to accept that application.
Make a motion to accept that grant.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that transportation grant. I could tell by the reading that, it seemed like they were indicating it was down from last year. Did you get that impression?
I'm not sure, actually. It's, it's an entitlement grant, so if the original allocation is different, they funded any overs in the past, and so I'm not sure. Not sure comparison last year, sorry.
That's all right, I was just going to get it from the reader. Any comment or question beyond that? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
All right, and then along those same lines, I have three contracts for medical assistance transportation drivers. First two are individual drivers, Tatiana Shindel and Inolie Torres. And the third one is between Lit County and Lebanon Transit for Medical Assistance Transportation Program services.
I'll make a motion to approve those contracts.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the drivers. Any comment or question beyond that? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
I have in front of you a letter of support for the City of Lebanon's application for a multi-modal transportation fund application. This is through the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. The city is applying for funding for the streetscape project on Cumberland from Fourth to Twelfth Street. Will include resurfacing sidewalks, stamped concrete designs, curving, replacement of trees with wider, with street trees and wider tree beds, mini bump outs on either sides of the street and Liberty Alley to create a safer sidewalk, and expansion on the Victorian light posts. So they are collecting letters of support on that, and the last one for, for one from the county.
Make a motion that we provide the city a letter of support for their streetscape request.
I'll second that, I think that will do a lot to improve the appearance of downtown. The trees are in need of a lot of attention.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that letter of support. Comments or questions? Did you see that?
I do have it, okay.
Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
And lastly, I've got requests for exemption from real estate property tax for disabled veterans for Audra Wilder of South Third Avenue, Lebanon, and Avion Roach of Weaver Town Road, Lebanon.
I'll make a motion to approve the two veterans for real estate tax exemption.
Now, second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve those disabled veterans exemptions for property taxes. Any comment or question? If there are none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Is everything I have, no assessment fills this afternoon. And the election board will give a few minutes to improve the accessibility of a grant verification. Motion to adjourn, Colonel.
Second.
Stand adjourned, thank you very much for your attendance. Stay tuned, John.
Well done.